Let's open the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 5th, 2021. Information session on the articles on annual town meeting related to eminent domain. Tony, I think you had some introductory comments?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everyone for joining on tonight, whether on Zoom or at home watching on TV. To participate in tonight's meeting, you do have to be on Zoom in order to, you know, submit questions, which will be done via the chat function of Zoom. The intent of tonight's meeting, along with last week's meeting and next week's meeting, is to inform residents and prepare them for town meeting. Try to get a little bit deeper than the book that has, you know, been delivered to your homes. Maybe answer some questions that, you know, the information isn't provided in those books. With, you know, with the public health emergency and the pandemic, we, we have a lot of, a lot of things to consider going into this meeting. And we're, you know, this information session, like the other two, can help potentially speed up some of the conversation that we have at town meeting, even though we expect this year's to be, to go into two days, Saturday and Sunday. We, we, most of that is due to last year's town meeting being postponed to September. And a lot of the articles were eliminated from the warrant. To get through it quick, because we were in a, we were in a much, in the, in the height of the pandemic at the time. So, you know, a lot of the articles were postponed until this year. So that's why you, you have, you know, sixty something articles in the book. And you have a pretty heavy book that got delivered to your house. A lot of pages there and a lot to get through. So if you're tuning in, if you're watching at home or you're on Zoom, because you're interested in the articles, because you want to, you want to get more information, we thank you for joining. I want to share my screen for a moment here. Last year, last year's town meeting was held outside behind the fire station, as will this year's town meeting. This graphic is in your book. It's the first, one of the first pages in the book is what to expect at town meeting. We only had about eighty people at last year's town meeting, and this year we expect much more. So for those of you that weren't there, the traffic pattern to get to, to the meeting will be from Castle Road towards Mitchell's Corner. There will, it'll be one-way traffic. Parking will be allowed on the street, on the park side of the street. Folks can drive through the parking lot for the Public Works and Fire Station for drop-off, and then up behind the DPW to get to parking available in the Johnson School and across the street at the Knights as a, as a backup lot. There is handicap and elderly parking going to be available in the parking lot, as you can see circled there, right next to the DPW garage. The registration, there'll be a smaller registration tent that everyone will need to go through. As a registered voter, you'll be provided a electronic voting device as you enter through the registration process. You'll, you'll be spaced out, there'll be lines on the ground, keeping, keeping your distance as you go through the check-in line. We will then, you'll then go into a larger tent where there will be seats set up in pairs spaced out throughout the tent. We ask that you sit with someone from your household. You will be required to keep your mask on at all times. There will be hand sanitizer stations. There are six porta potties available inside the, the tent area. We will have a, a large TV screen behind the stage and two more screens further back for people that are further, further away from the stage so they can see what's going on. There's a lot of effort put into the logistics of putting this, putting these town meetings together, and it's all done, you know, the core of those details is public health. But we understand that these issues are very important to the town, and we want to make a safe oper, you know, provide a safe opportunity for our residents to get to town meeting. We do, we will be starting at twelve, check-in will be open at eleven. We're going to be down there earlier, but, so if you show up early, we'll, we'll probably be able to get you in. But check-in opens officially at eleven AM, and the town meeting will open at twelve.
Tony, how many seats will there be?
We have eight hundred seats.
Is the, is the tent walled, or is it open on the sides, just out of curiosity?
One, just the back wall has a wall, the other two, the other three sides are open air, ten feet height. So if anybody is standing, you know, out, sitting or standing outside of the, the tent area, they can still see and participate.
And there's a, a wider area fence around. In other words, you have to enter and exit through that registration area, right? You can't wander in from quite literally left field.
Right. Registered voters will be allowed in. Non-registered voters will, can sit on the outside of that perimeter fencing. If anybody is, you know, has a caretaker that isn't a registered voter, they would be let in and to sit with the person that they are taking care of or, or aiding during the, during the, during the event. If anybody needs to leave during the event, you are to go out through the registration tent that you came in. You are to give your name to one of the poll checkers, give them your electronic voting device, they'll take your name down. And then when you return, you should go through the registration again to the same person you left and let them know, you know, my name's on the list and get another, and get a clicker on your way back in. So that's a, a quick explanation as to what to expect when you come to town meeting. We, tonight's meeting is featuring, is hosted by the Board of Selectmen. It's regarding the eminent domain articles, Article 21V and Article 22. The Board of Selectmen are going to present a PowerPoint of information that details both of those articles. And, and once we get through that, we will go to question and answer session. We did receive a number of questions ahead of time that I will go through before getting to new questions that are in the chat. I think a couple of them came in late that might not be included in mine, but if I don't, you know, if I don't ask, if it's not in the ones that we received earlier, please just ask it again in the chat. The chat function is set up where anybody that, let's see, okay. It's set up for host only. So the way I'm doing this is that if you, if you want to ask a question tonight, I'm the only one that's going to see it. And I will read the question at, during the Q and A for the Board of Selectmen or the attorneys to answer. I will not announce the name of the person that asked that question. Unless you, you know, really want me to, you can put that in the chat, please announce my name. But otherwise, trying to provide a safe space for people to ask whatever question they may want, feel comfortable in asking that question. We ask that, we try not to repeat them. We do have a, a two-hour time here. We're, we're trying to shut down at nine o'clock. We, we are meeting again tomorrow. The Board of Selectmen are meeting again tomorrow. So anything that we don't get to, we can take up again tomorrow, tomorrow night. So, you know, feel free to add, you know, to submit your question in the chat. I will keep a, I will, I will try to keep a list of those questions that are submitted and bounce around so we can get to as many questions as possible. And other than that, that, that's pretty much it. So Josh, I'm going to switch over to the PowerPoint.
All right. I just wanted to add that we have our Town Council, Jeffrey Blake, on the call, as well as our eminent domain attorney, James Masterman. So they're both here to give us expert commentary.
Right, right. Share my screen here, here we go. Can you see it?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, so you can see the agenda here. We're going to have a little introduction, which Tony just walked through. And we'll, we'll walk through the two articles and the specifics of those articles, and then talk a little bit about the financials and negotiation and general information, followed by a question and answer session. Again, I think as Tony pointed out, the goal of this meeting is to provide voters information on these two articles and answer any questions you might have. Next slide. Can you go to the next slide, Tony? There you go. So just a little background before we get rolling. I think everybody on this call and probably anybody watching at home already knows that the topic of preserving the open space at East Point has been a hot topic in town now for something like three years. And, you know, the Board of Selectmen feel like the Nahat's destiny should lie in, in the voters' hands. And that's why we introduced these eminent domain articles onto town warrant, to give people a chance to exercise their right to control Nahat's destiny. We believe that eminent domain authorization greatly enhances Nahat's negotiation situation with, with regard to Northeastern. Again, we've said it before, but, you know, we very much would like to come to a negotiated solution with Northeastern, but it has to be a mutually acceptable solution. In other words, acceptable to the people of Nahat and acceptable to Northeastern. I think we want to, we want to level that playing field in order to achieve a better outcome for Nahat in, in any future negotiations. And it also provides a means to preserve this conservation land or preserve this open space as conservation land if we're unable to get the kind of cooperation we hope to get from Northeastern. So, you know, it's fair to say that Northeastern remains unwavering in their plan to develop on top of the Murphy Battery. As a reminder, that area is zoned natural resource area for the last thirty years. They want to build a fifty-five thousand square foot building and associated parking lots, lighting, and a field of geothermal wells as well. So in summary, the voters of Nahat should decide on the future of Nahat. And that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to provide the voters that opportunity on May fifteenth, an annual town meeting. So there are two articles. Article 21B is one of the Community Preservation Act articles, and that authorizes a partial funding for eminent domain on a defined portion of East Point. The next article is Article 22. They come right after one another at town meeting. That Article 22 authorizes the Board of Selectmen to execute eminent domain in this defined area. That doesn't mean we have to. It, it authorizes to do so. This is-
Josh, can I jump in? I, I hate to interrupt you, but-
Oh, no, please do.
You are, you are right. It doesn't, you're not required to, but also by the way that the article is written, it au, au, authorizes you to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain. So to the extent that you are able to reach a, an agreement, where, where the way it's written, you could just purchase it without having to even exercise any eminent domain.
Yeah, thanks for that. And, you know, please, Attorneys Blake and Masterman, you know, chime in at any point you feel you have some contributing word. So, and same with you, Mark and Gene and, and Tony. I don't want this to be just me going through my presentation. But here is the article itself, there's a lot of words there, but that's what it looks like. A couple key points that we will, well, I guess you can't see my cursor. So we'll, we'll just come, there's the article. A lot of words there, but some of the important points I'm highlighting in the following, in, in following slides. So we can go to the next slide. So Article 21V requests a borrowing of one point five million dollars on a thirty-year bond through the Community Preservation Act funding source. And before we move on, I thought there was some value in sharing some of the background on the Community Preservation Act. So I believe it was at Annual Town Meeting in 2004, Nahat voted to participate in the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act. Nahat taxpayers, that, that money, that CPA money is funded through a three percent surcharge on our real estate tax bills, and that's been in effect since 2005. Nahat was a relatively early adopter of the, of this CPA or participation in the CPA, and that actually helps us get a better match from the state, having joined early and also having the higher percentage of three percent. CPA funds can be used for historic preservation, open space, recreation, and public housing. So we can't use it for infrastructure, schools, you know, police departments. It's, it's for those specific four purposes. And it's, it's a fund that's separate from the general fund. So that's intentional, so it doesn't get, let's call it raided for other purposes. The state matches Nahat taxpayers' contribution. That has been averaging over the sixteen years now, I guess, that we've been doing this, at about sixty percent match.
Josh, do we, do we know yet what match is going to be?
No, it, it changes every year. You know, some years it's higher, some years it's lower. For this past year, it was sixty-nine point four percent. So that's great. I will say that in the budgeting for this, for this bond or for this eminent domain, we assumed an average match of fifty percent. We've averaged more than that, but, so we think that's conservative. But that's what we've assumed in the, in the calculations. So Nahat's Community Preservation Act is administered by Nahat's Community Preservation Committee, known as CPC. And the CPC reviews all the applications it receives for funding, and they down-select and put, it put forward the selected applications to town meeting for vote. Each one of those applications is voted on separately at town meeting. So this is the last of them. So V, that's probably about the twentieth letter in the alphabet. So it's, you know, about, about twenty CPC articles in this year's warrant. And finally, anyone interested or advocating for open space, historic preservation, recreation, or public housing initiatives can apply for CPA grants. In this case, the Nahat Board of Selectmen applied for this Article 21B funding.
Do you have to go get him or is Cassie first?
Next slide, Tony? So for funding eminent domain, why use CPA money instead of general funds? The easy answer is that CPA funds receive an average match of sixty percent from Massachusetts, thus reducing the cost to the taxpayers by, by that amount. And I'll, I'll point out that CPA specifically lists eminent domain as a, as a purpose for CPA funds. There's a quote from the CPA law there, Massachusetts General, Chapter forty-four B, Section Five, Paragraph Three E, "For the purposes of community preservation and upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, a city or town may take by eminent domain," et cetera, et cetera. Next slide. Actually, Jeff Blake, I know you have recently been looking at or, or worked on some, some eminent domain cases, I think in Duxbury?
Yeah, we, we've recently took a seventeen-acre parcel in Duxbury for historic preservation, affordable housing, and conservation open space purposes. And while we didn't use a hundred percent CPA funds, they did use CPA funds, and they are currently wrapping the package up and getting ready to send it out to be bonded. So it, it, it's absolutely done throughout the Commonwealth, and, and that's the latest example I can think of. And that was last summer, August first or so, at the, at the last town meeting that the town of Duxbury had.
Yeah, so similar to our case where we're partially funding it using CPA money and partially funding it through private donations. I think Newton and B.C. have a case active right now, and Newton is funding it, I think entirely with CPA funds. So it's, it's a legitimate and used purpose for CPA funds, just as we're doing here. Next slide. I also just wanted to talk about some recent projects that Nahat voters funded through the CPA, through Community Preservation Act monies. So last year, actually it wasn't last year, because last year was COVID year, but improvements to the women's softball field, renovation of the Nahat Public Library outside terrace that was just completed recently. The boat ramp at the wharf was partially funded, I think, by CPA funds. This year, we're hoping to refurbish the Flash Road tennis courts and basketball courts, assuming that passes. Also the Spring Road basketball courts, if that passes. I know there's some improvements to the public housing buildings on, on CPA article as well. So the point of this is that, you know, there's a variety of kind of projects that have been done around town. And I, I think of these as a quality-of-life projects. They're, you know, things that essentially just make Nahat a nice place. You know, some people might never go up to East Point, but that doesn't mean it's not a valid or a valuable use of the money. I think it's safe to say I'll probably never play women's softball, but, you know, it certainly adds to, I think, the quality of life, you know, in Nahat. I, I enjoy driving by there and seeing people have fun in the summer. You know, you might not go to the library, but maybe you use the boat ramp. I use the boat ramp, I don't, I don't play women's softball. So, you know, all these, it's, they're very much community projects. So I just wanted to point out that there's sort of a broad cross-section of, of projects that have been funded through Community Preservation Act. And, you know, any one of them might not be your bag, but they might be your neighbor's bag. Next slide, please. So Article 21B funds one point five million dollars for eminent domain. Our budget for eminent domain is four and a half million dollars. Of that four and a half million dollars, three million dollars must come from private donations. The one and a half million dollars from the town CPA bond is funded through this Article 21V. Our cost estimates for eminent domain were established as bulleted below approximately a little under two million dollars for compensation to Northeastern for, for the land, fair market value for the land. About half a million dollars in anticipated legal costs, which leaves us about two million dollars in contingency. So we think our, the budget we're showing includes about two million dollars for contingency. So we haven't cut this, you know, right to the bone. We do think that, you know, if it comes to eminent domain, there'll be, you know, we'll talk about that in a moment, but, you know, there, there, there could be a challenge to that, that two million dollar compensation. But that's the, that's the outline, that's the, the basic budget and, and where it came from. Next slide. So this is an important slide. The only contribution coming from Nahat taxpayers is the one point five million dollar CPA thirty-year bond. This is the number that's in the warrant article. And if you, if you take the one and a half million dollars over thirty years with principal and interest, subtract out the state match, divided by thirty, and divided by an assumed number of households of about sixteen hundred, it works out to thirty-five dollars per household per year. And that, I just want to remind people that that thirty-five dollars comes out of the existing three percent real estate surcharge for CPA funds. That's already in your tax bills. So there is no additional tax burden for eminent domain. It's coming out of what you're already paying. Right now, the average household contribution is about a hundred and forty dollars. That, that three percent surcharge is about a hundred and forty dollars per household on average. One subtle thing I'll clarify here is the three percent is after you take a hun- it's based on your home value minus a hundred thousand dollars. In other words, the first hundred thousand dollars of your home value is not, does not have this three percent tax applied. And again, the thirty-five dollars per year is already included in your real estate taxes. So there is no change to your tax bill at all for taking this thirty-year bond. Next slide. Yeah, so this is just the math breakdown, I just wanted to show it graphically. You know, thirty-year bond is got, with principal and interest, totals a little over two and a half million after the state match, little under one point seven million, divided by thirty years, fifty-six thousand dollars a year, divided by sixteen hundred households, thirty-five dollars. So again, thirty-five dollars is in your taxes. There is, of course, an implication of spending that thirty-five dollars, and the implication is specifically it's thirty-five dollars that can't go to another CPA-funded project. But it's important to point out, it does not hog all the CPA funds. Over that thirty years, it averages about seventeen percent so that, of, of the expected CPA available funds. So that leaves eighty-three percent of CPA funds available for other projects. It's, you know, in, in the early years, it's a higher percentage than seventeen. In the later years, it's a smaller percentage of seventeen. But on average, it's seven, it consumes about seventeen percent of the CPA funds. So that, I just want to point that out. That is the implication, that it's money that, you know, could be spent on something else, like some of those example projects I gave you, that will go to the eminent domain bond if it comes to that. Next slide, please. The second article is Article 22. This is the article that authorizes the Board of Selectmen to execute eminent domain, or as Jeff Blake pointed out, acquire by gift or negotiated purchase. There's a lot of words there, but I think we can just go to the next slide, because we will talk about some of the details there. So this is a map showing of the- proposed conservation restriction area on the sort of the right-hand side, Lodge Park is shown in white. And so the conservation restriction would be the green areas as well as the easement for Canoe Beach shown in yellow. The existing Edwards Lab area of Northeastern's property shown on the left in white. So what we are, this area is preserving as much area as possible, but making sure we do not infringe at all on Northeastern's current operations. Like, for example, all of Bathing Beach on the bottom left is, that's where their pipes are. We don't, we take any of that beach or put a restriction on any of that beach. So we're trying to be careful to not interfere with their current operations. Next slide. So some specifics about Article twenty-two. And this, this is true, actually, I should have been more specific. This, this applies to Article twenty-one B as well. The articles require at a minimum of three million dollars in private donations is available prior to executing eminent domain. Or also, I failed to mention, three million dollars must be in hand in order for us to execute that CPA one point five million dollar bond. In other words, we can't do anything until we have this three million dollars in private donations. It's, it's explicitly stated in those two articles. And the reason for this is to assure that most of the costs are covered by private donations, limiting the taxpayer contribution to the one point five million dollar CPA bond. The article also requires eminent domain taking via Massachusetts General Law, Chapter ADA. And the reason for this is to provide assurance that Nahat can abandon the taking if the cost is too high. So this might be a good time for you, Jeff Blake, maybe you want to talk about who eminent domain procedures?
Sure, I, I know that we've given this, Attorney Masterman and I have given a, a couple of these little tutorials on this, but for those of you who aren't there, I, I'm going to kind of shorten what I usually give. There are really two methods of, of exercising eminent domain in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There's Chapter seventy-nine. Chapter seventy-nine requires a town meeting vote, requires an appropriation of money. Then the town authorizes the Board of Selectmen to take. The Board of Selectmen adopt a so-called Order of Taking. They, they file it with the Registry of Deeds and the town owns the property. And the only thing that happens now is we fight over how much it was really worth or how much the other side says it's worth. If we aren't able to settle the case, we go to a jury trial, the jury comes back and says it's X and the town has to pay the difference between what they thought it was worth, the pro tanto, and what the jury comes back at. The, the big difference is here, once it's at the Registry of Deeds, we own it. It's ours to do with what we want. The other chapter that I thought, that we're talking about here is ADA, eighty, letter A. And that's a little bit different than seventy-nine. And the reason being is that the town doesn't own it immediately. What happens is, it's very similar. You go to a town meeting, you get a town meeting vote to authorize the taking. The Board of Selectmen then issue a, you know, I'm not going to get into a whole bunch of technical aspects of it, but the bottom line is we decide to take, we issue a pro tanto, we notify the other side. If the other side challenges it, we are then, we go to court, but it's a little bit different. We don't own the property at this point. We go to court and rather than go immediately before a jury, we go to a three commissioner or three judge panel who listens to both sides and decides what the value of the property is. And the other big difference from ADA is up until we, we own it, which is way at the other end, the town can abandon at any time the taking. So if we go forward and we go to this three judge panel and it comes back at, at an exorbitant number, a lot more than we thought, the town has the option of, at that point, walking away. Chapter seventy-nine, you own it, you pay for it, you don't walk away. So ADA, you walk away. Now, ADA is with not, wa- wa- isn't without risk, of course, because if we walk away, we are required to indemnify in full the other side. And, you know, there's not a, a lot of case law and there's not a lot of guidance here from the courts with respect to Chapter ADA, because it's not used that often. But I, I do know that Attorney Masterman has indicated at the last meeting, we talked about some of the damages and he refuted some of the, the claims made by Northeastern and, and, and I'll let him get into that. But the big difference here is, as, as we keep talking about, is that we don't own it until we really want to own it. And at any time, we can back away after we, we, we understand exactly how much this is going to cost. So those are the big differences. And that's why, in this case, the Board of Selectmen are, are moving forward with that to, to limit risk, you know, frankly, to, to limit risk.
Yeah, and another, another good reason to abandon would be if Northeastern decides, you know what, let's change our plans to something that's more acceptable to the town. That would be a good reason to back, to abandon, in my opinion. So I guess it was two weeks ago now, Northeastern had a Zoom information session and, and made a pretty high claim on what those abandonment costs could be. And that actually was repeated again in Lynn Item article yesterday. And so even though we covered this at the Selectmen meeting last week, I think it's appropriate to ask Mr. Masterman, if the town abandoned the taking under ADA, what would be the position of the town if Northeastern claims in court that it's entitled to be paid for construction delays? I don't know if you're able to answer that question, Mr. Masterman?
He might be muted. One second.
Yeah, he is.
Okay, Jim, there you go.
All right, there we go. There you go. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Josh. Good evening, everyone. Yes, we did cover this before, but let, let, let's talk about this again, just for a moment. Jeff Blake mentioned this concept of indemnification in full. That can be a rather daunting concept when you're talking about an abandonment. Let me put a few things in some context here. We're talking about the fair market value of the real estate. That's what an eminent domain land damage proceeding is. It's for the determination of the fair market value of the real estate. In a taking that is proposed like this one, it starts with that, but it also has the second layer of that we're not taking everything that Northeastern owns away. We're proposing to take an easement. That's a partial interest in the land. And as Josh indicated, we're not even taking what Northeastern is currently using and has used for the last fifty years, if you will. So we are trying to mitigate impact across the board here and protect that, what the town, a Selectman believe, as well as many members of the town believe, is something worth protecting as was done earlier by the zoning and now by this taking. And the only reason we're proceeding by way of taking, or the Selectmen may proceed by way of taking if the town authorizes, is because there is this exception that allows educational institutions like Northeastern to circumvent the zoning and the intent of the zoning here. They can do things which other users cannot. That is the principal dispute here as to value. We believe that a, that a educational institution like Northeastern is a world unto itself. But fair market value is not determined by a world unto itself. It is determined by the broader market. If this property were available for sale, for sale on the open market, who would be interested in acquiring it? And who would pay the highest price for it? Because of the natural resource zoning that's imposed upon this, we know that no private developer would be interested in acquiring this property because no development can occur. And when you remove the private developer from competing for this property in the open market, the price that one would pay for development purpose disappears. So left in its stead is what is conservation land worth? So I start my comments by saying, we don't believe that we'll ever get to the point of having to abandon this taking. Because we believe that Emmett Logue, the appraiser who appraised this property, did so properly, took into consideration the market forces that are brought to bear if this property were available for sale in the open market, compared this property correctly to other conservation-related properties that it might be available and they have bought and sold up and down throughout Essex County. And we set a right price on the underlying land. And then we're paying for what we took from Northeastern, which is not the entirety. We're leaving them with the, their ownership in fee. We're leaving them with the ability to use it. We're taking away their ability to develop on it. However, we are asking for an opportunity to see whether we're right. There's no guarantees in these things. There, we, we have to litigate this matter if Northeastern challenges the valuation, which we fully expect them to do so. And if for some reason, whether it's a change of heart by the Selectmen or it is, as Jeff said, something that we don't anticipate, where the commissioners disagree with our valuation and the decision is made to abandon the taking, we are in a position then of having to reimburse Northeastern for its costs and expenses and if they've suffered any damage to their real estate. The fact that it's an abandonment and an assessment of damages in the event of abandonment doesn't change the approach to valuation in the eminent domain world. You're dealing here with land damages, real estate damages. What has been, what, what has, what loss has the owner suffered by having this proceeding go on for a year, let's say, before the decision is made to abandon? What we have learned in the cases, and as Jeff said, Jeff Blake said, there, there is not a lot of case law under Chapter ADA, is that the most analogous situation we can find is as if this were a temporary taking. Assume for a moment that from the time the Selectmen adopt this order, the order of intention to take and we go through the Commissioner's hearing and we abandon, assume that that is similar to a temporary taking, a temporary use of the land. In temporary takings, the jurisprudence is well-developed. And, and, and eminent domain situations, when there is a taking, a temporary taking by eminent domain, there are many cases that talk about that. There's none in ADA in this abandonment situation, but there are in very similar situations where a government comes in and uses the land for a temporary period of time. Think temporary construction easements when they're building highways and things like that. When there is a temporary taking, the measure of damages is what, what would that land have rented for during that period of time? What is a fair return as if that land had been available for rental for that period of time? And that's how we think this would proceed. There is absolutely no support whether it is a valuation under Chapter seventy-nine, as Jeff Blake mentioned, where the taking is made with finality at the outset, or it's a Chapter ADA proceeding for the payment of what is sometimes referred to as consequential damages, damages to the business operations, let's say, of the owner. Or as asserted by people at Northeastern, the increased cost of construction. There is zero support in the case law that we've been able to find that would ever pay consequential damages for increased cost of construction in an eminent domain case, which looks to determine the fair market value or the land damage sustained to the land that's taken. Because there is no ADA cases that have been reported, I can't say conclusively that it will happen just the way I've laid out. But I am eminently confident that if, in fact, there is a determination of payment of, of anything other than land damages, that it would be a precedent setting across the nation. It just has never happened and I do not expect it to happen here.
Thanks. Thanks for that explanation. I think, I think it's important to let that sink in with people that.
Stronger letter, stronger letter to follow, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think it's just, you know, it's important for people to listen to those words that, you know, this, this claim that was made a couple of weeks ago and again reiterated in the Lynn Item yesterday. It's never happened before, right? So, and you don't expect it'll happen this time either, so.
Just to add one thing, there will be a price for abandoning this taking. There will be a cost that will have to be paid to Northeastern should the abandonment occur. That cost will not include payment of the increased cost of construction.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, as you started off your talk, we don't think there'll be a need to abandon, but we thought it was important to, to require the use of ADA in the event that the, you know, the price tag got too high and, and Mr. Logue's appraisal is off by, it would have to be off by a hundred percent to exceed the four and a half million dollar budget. But we thought it was important to specify Chapter ADA to address any concerns about risk. I don't know, Mark, you have, you had seventeen years or so working on the finances of town. I don't know if you have any commentary on these bullets here where we've tried to minimize the risk to the taxpayers?
Yeah, thanks, Josh. And thank you, Jim Masterman and Jeff for the summary of ADA and the potential cost. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll restate what I said last week, Josh, but, you know, I think that the Board, the Board of Selectmen have, by choosing ADA as a process, allowing us a number of off-ramps if we need them, and I agree with you, I don't think we will need them. The best off-ramp will be a negotiated settlement with Northeastern. And again, as I mentioned before, I have planned and managed the town's financial issues for two decades. And I see absolutely no financial risk to the taxpayer in regards to this taking. None.
I would, I would like to add too that, you know, if the, we may be getting to this later, but if, if the costs exceed four and a half million dollars, we don't have the authority to spend any more tax, any more town dollars than this one and a half million dollars. If for some reason or other it exceeded four and a half million dollars and there was a big ground swell in town that the town wanted to pay for more, wanted to pay more money, that would have to be voted on and passed by two-thirds vote. So it's not, authorizing the Board of Selectmen to execute eminent domain does not risk anything more than the one and a half million dollar CPA bond.
Let me also say, Josh, that the community preservation funds cannot be used for any damages that the town may have to pay to Northeastern if we do abandon it. So the three million dollars in private funding would be used to settle any damages that the town may be exposed to, not the, not the community preservation money.
Right. Okay, so wrapping up this slide, and again, this is a repeat, but the conservation restriction does not in any way impact but the conservation restriction does not in any way impact Northeastern's current operation or land use. And the reason for that is, you know, the goal is to allow Northeastern to continue to, as it currently functions, but at the same time, preserve conservation land. Next slide, Tony. So this slide is dedicated to addressing citizens' concerns that we've heard over the past year or so, since eminent domain has sort of come to the forefront. You know, one of the early concerns was, well, even before eminent domain came into onto our screens, you know, a concern was we can't stop Northeastern from this oversized development. And, you know, with eminent domain, we can preserve this natural resource land and have leverage in negotiations. Another concern was we can't afford the legal fight. But private donors have funded the legal fees incurred so far and into the future, thus eliminating the legal costs to the town. So the legal costs to date have been covered by private donations, and we expect that will continue in the future. Another concern is, well, if we resist, you know, and don't just let Northeastern do whatever they want in this area, we will lose their offer. Northeastern's offer of $6 million over 40 years is a poor offer. Financial assessments show that an expanded Northeastern's cost to the town are between 14 and 27 million over that same 40-year period. Eminent domain would provide the leverage to negotiate fair compensation to Nahat, not whatever Northeastern feels like offering. We need to, we need to get a fair deal from Northeastern, eminent domain or not. What if the court determined that the costs are more than $4.5 million? As we just discussed, Chapter ADA is specified, so the taking can be abandoned. This assures that Nahat's costs won't exceed the $1.5 million bond. What if we don't get the $3 million in private donations? We rewrote, we wrote both articles, both Article 21V and 22, so that no action can be taken unless we have $3 million in private donations in hand. And we touched upon this just a moment ago. To Northeastern now claims $6 to $9 million in construction cost delays will be included in the damages. There is no substantiation for this statement. It's designed to scare voters into voting the way Northeastern wants them to vote, so they can build unencumbered. Extensive review, as Mr. Masterman just outlined of eminent domain cases, show this has never happened, not once. So we, as a board, and feel that the financial risks have really been eliminated from this entire process. Next slide, please. So, important recent news. The private donors have committed that the donated $3 million will be spent first. So that means first on the taking, and that means first in the event that we have to abandon. In addition to that, we will have that $3 million in the hands of the town prior to the May 15th annual town meeting. So it's possible that we won't, that the bond, we might not even need the bond, or it might be a smaller bond if the $3 million covers all or a greater portion of the eminent domain budget. In the very unlikely event that Nahat abandons the taking, those private donations would be used to cover the expenses. In other words, all that, all those abandonment costs would be covered by those private donations. So those are really important recent developments that I think we feel really minimizes Nahat's exposure even more.
Let me just add, Josh, that under Article 21V, it only authorizes the board to borrow, it doesn't require that we borrow. So like you said, it may be very likely that we will never borrow that $1.5 million.
Yep. Next slide, please. So, negotiated solution. Again, we believe that a mutually acceptable negotiated solution with Northeastern is the best outcome. We'll strive to reach such an outcome. In negotiations, it's important to have leverage. That's one of the things we've been trying to drive home is that eminent domain gives us a lot of leverage in future negotiations with Northeastern. It's another reason, I think it's fair to say, we hope it passes at annual town meeting. Obviously, it's the choice, the choice is the voters, but I know how I'll be voting. And again, in returning negotiation, you have to know the value of what's being negotiated. So that's why it's important that we conducted those financial assessments so that we know what the difference between a good deal and a bad deal is in terms of financial compensation. And both parties have to go into the negotiation willing to make meaningful and significant steps towards the middle ground. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean Northeastern gets to do whatever they want and, you know, give us what they want. You know, we both have to be willing to bend and find the common ground. And that is what we hope to do. But in summary, eminent domain authorization is an important tool to reach a mutually acceptable negotiated solution. Next slide. So in summary, Nahat citizens have the legal right and the means via eminent domain to preserve our open space. This land can be preserved with no increase to your tax burden. Using Chapter ADA eliminates the risk of exceeding what Nahat is willing to pay. So eminent domain is a cost-effective, low-risk, permanent solution to unnecessary development. Your vote on the two articles thus becomes, do the taxpayers want to allocate $35 or less, could be less, as we pointed out, because of those private donations will go, will be spent first of the CPA funds already on your tax bill to preserve open space. So that's what, that's what we think you'll all be voting on on April 15th. I think that's, I think we can move to questions and questions, Tony. Is there anything, Gene, did you have anything you wanted to add? Or Mark, before we move on? Mr. Blake or Mr. Kraft?
Just thank you, Josh, for all the work that you put into this. And great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, Josh, just one thing, and that is after I look at all this and all the work that we've done, that you've done, Mark especially, and yourself particularly, it's hard to understand how anybody can question some of the numbers that we've generated because they're proof positive of how hard we are trying to get this through without any cost to the taxpayer. Today, going through some other notes, I pick up, if I could, March 18th article in the Boston Globe. And it's Enzo who made this quote. And this isn't to drive any stakes, this is just to show what can happen when you put your mind to it. He said, "Then the town's ready to do battle, and we've got plenty of people ready to do it. So that's what we're going to do." Point to make there is he was going to do that without the funds that we have in front of us. That was going to cost the taxpayers to start fighting back in 18 up until present day. Just something to think about. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think, you know, this process has been, it's been a good one to go through, you know, listening to citizens' concerns raised during selectmen's meetings or even read on social media. I think it's helped us, you know, look at this from every angle and take these steps to minimize the risk of the whole proposition. So it's been a good learning process. And, you know, we've done our best to listen to, listen to the citizens' concerns and hopefully, we have addressed them. You know, I view this as, you know, we've done our homework and we're turning in our homework. And this is, it's a pass/fail grade here, you know. It's a yes or no on May 15th. And as we said last week, it's a binary, it's a binary situation. We're either gonna have a building or a park. And there's no halfway, right? There's no half a building, there's no part-time building. This is forever. You know, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the articles we vote on, you know, the police budget or the school budget, you know, we get another whack at it next year. This is our, this is our one chance, and I think we better take it. But it is, it is up to the voters to determine the fate in Nahat. But I just want to remind people that this is a...
Josh, just to clear something up there. That is not a knock on Enzo. That is just where we stood back then and that we were ready to go to battle with no bullets in the gun. All that's the only reason for the statement.
Yep. It's hard to believe it's been three years already, but it has. And we'll see what happens on the 15th.
Hey. I am gonna get into the question and answer portion. It's eight o'clock, we got an hour. We want to try and get through as many of these as possible. We got a lot of questions in the chat as we were going through. And of course, we have the questions ahead of time. So I'm gonna try to get through as many of them as possible. Couple of questions we got in advance of tonight's meeting. Warren, Article 21V seeks authorization to borrow $1.5 million to pay a portion of acquisition costs for property interest at East Point. Please verify that the community preservation funds may be raised by borrowing. My understanding is that the community preservation money may only be raised through a tax levy on real property. In other words, the town can't borrow money, call it community preservation funds, and then spend it expecting matching or contributory payment from the Commonwealth. So the question is, and maybe it's a question that Jeff Blake can respond to, is please verify that the community preservation fund can be raised by borrowing.
You can borrow using community preservation funds under Section 11. And what you're borrowing against is the revenue that's coming in from the community preservation surcharge. Like I said, there is a, and I'm not just saying this in a vacuum. We are currently doing that in another community right now. And it's, it is something that's able to be done, and other communities do it all the time.
And Nahat does it.
And Nahat does it. I think you got another bond or borrowing, don't you?
Yeah, we have, one of the articles is for a $500,000 bond, 10-year bond for work on historic buildings, the library, the town hall, and I think Ellingwood Chapel. So $500,000 over 10 years is pretty similar to $1.5 million over 30 years. So there is another bonding article on this year's, and we've also used it in the past. I think the recent terrace renovation of the library was also bonded. I don't know.
The town law office bonded also.
Yeah, that was, what did that cost, Mark? You remember?
I believe $600,000.
Yeah, so, you know, that was quite a while ago. So maybe not quite the same scope as this, but pretty close. So the answer is yes, you can borrow.
Thank you. More than 30 years ago, the board of selectmen sponsored a motion at a special town meeting from the Finkon for a taking by eminent domain or a negotiated price of 27 acres of the golf course to protect it from development. Believe that both selectmen, Canty and Cullen, had involvement in that process. Can you talk about why it was good for the town then to borrow the funds from current operating funds and how much Nahat's paid over the years for the privilege of having a golf course? How do you, how do the two compare more than 30 years later? Mark?
Well, is the question, the borrowing that we did for the golf course, I believe we borrowed about $1.5 million, somewhere around there. But, I mean, that, the reason we were able to get to that point was, in my belief, the threat of eminent domain. We were able to negotiate with the owners or the operators of the golf course because of the threat of eminent domain. They realized that, and we came to a negotiated settlement. So I think they're very similar in that regard. That, you know, in the golf course case, it was a threat of domain. And I think it's similar to what we're trying to get at with Northeastern.
That borrowing, that one approximately $1.5 million borrowing you said, Mark, obviously in those, in those, they, you know, that's a smaller, I mean, a bigger chunk of money than it would be now, since it was, whatever it was, 25 years ago. And that was also taken without the benefit of the CPA contribution. So what we're proposing in 2021 is a smaller financial chunk. I guess that was my point.
Yeah. My involvement in that, just to state it, was to identify that whole area as wetlands and floodplains. And just breaking down any opportunity for a developer to come in and develop. It's just, under those conditions, it wasn't going to work.
You were chair of the Conservation Commission at that time, right, Gene?
Correct.
If the eminent domain question passes and down the road, the town feels they need more than $4.5 million, can the taxpayers be required to increase the amount of money committed?
No. We can't be, it can't be required. They would have to vote to do so.
Jeff, you had your hand raised.
I was gonna answer, but Josh answered, so.
Well, you can expand on my brief answer.
Yeah, you can't, if we decided we needed more money, we'd have to come back to the town meeting for an appropriation. The only instance there would be, would be if a court came back with a higher value. But the method that we're using under ADA, we have protections in place where we're able to abandon before that situation happened. But if we were, if there was ultimately a verdict and we were gonna go forward and it came back higher, then we would have to pay the verdict. But that's the whole reason behind using Chapter ADA, so we don't get in that position. Chapter 79, for example, as I'd said before, we own it and then we fight about value. And if what we paid for is later decided to be inadequate, we would get a jury verdict against us and we would have to pay that. And courts will require you to pay whether or not there's an appropriation. You'll have to come up with the monies. But we've got, that's why we've gone this other way with Chapter ADA.
And the board of selectmen have stated in the past that in the event that it exceeded the $4.5 million, we would seek money from other sources. And if we couldn't raise additional money, we would abandon.
I for one will not support asking for taxpayers for additional funds.
Me neither.
Second that.
Okay, so the next, these next questions, a lot of procedural questions here. Uh, tomorrow, we will have. Uh, the moderator joining the Board of Selectmen meeting, uh, where a lot of these questions should be. Uh, presented uh, to the moderator. I did meet with the moderator and town council today. So I can provide a quick answer, but again, it's really the moderator's position to be providing these answers. Um, but I do want, you know, I know that these questions have been um, submitted to us for a little bit now and. Um, wanted to, you know, and, you know, provide uh, the residents comfort that we are looking into it. Uh, the first question was, uh. Could you clarify whether Article Two, Sections nine and fifteen of the Town Charter are currently valid? In other words, if someone were to make a motion under either section, would it be allowed or ruled out of order? Specifically, if twenty-five voters stand to postpone a question. To an adjourned meeting by ballot within ten days as Section fifteen specifies. Would that motion be in order and accepted by the moderator? Um, so again, question for the moderator, but we spoke about it today with the, with the moderator in, in the town council. Um, Article Two, Section fifteen is not valid. According to, yes, go ahead, Jeff?
I, I was gonna say, it, it. I, i- in most instances, it, it is to, to the moderator, but. I believe that that article, that, that particular section is clearly uh, not legal. Um, there are ballot election laws and the like. That would prevent them, prevent us from continuing a meeting and holding a, a ballot. Um, there are a number of requirements and that particular bylaw meets none of them. So. Certainly, w- we will advise the moderator, and we have at, at our meeting today. That, 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 that particular section is unlawful and that he can uh, rule any, any kind of motion like that out of order and not, and not here.
Hmm. Uh, Article Two, Section nine is valid, except for. The references of Section fifteen that lie within it.
Hmm.
So. Uh, that, you know, any, any motion under Section fifteen would be ruled out of order. Uh, number two is, could you please clarify the vote to take warrant articles out of the current order? Uh, how that would be treated? If, uh, specifically if the motion is made and seconded. To take up Article twenty-two, Article twenty-one V. Or Article twenty earlier than listed in the post of warrant, does that require? A simple majority vote, or would the moderator require a two-thirds vote? Um. So again, uh. Question for the moderator, but we did talk about it today. Um, a motion to take an article out of order. Can only be made while no other pending motions are open and on the table. And our town, and town meeting time defers to local bylaws if they are contrary. And our local bylaw, Section six of Article two states. That articles of the warrant shall be acted upon in the order in which they appear. Unless otherwise determined by the vote of the meeting. In other words, it would require a vote of town meeting to take any article out of order.
Hmm.
The threshold of that vote. Um, in town meeting time. Is a simple majority vote. However, the moderator has the discretion to require a two-thirds vote. Um, and. He or she has to state a reason as to why they would uh, move that to a third, two-thirds vote. Any comment, Jeff?
Well, I, I, a, a little bit, and you, you're a hundred percent right. It's up to the moderator as to the quantum of the vote under town meeting time. Um, certainly under your bylaw, you're gonna, somebody at town meeting would have to make the motion and the, the quantum of vote. Um, i- it's, it's important, the moderator has to exercise his discretion, so I don't want to step on his feet too much. But I, I think that oftentimes. If a moderator sees that this is being used as a strategy, for example. Not many people are there. And they want to get a, a, a later article that everybody's gonna show up for. They want to get it done. When they're trying to do some of those, uh, some strategic or power plays or the like. A moderator can, could then, in those instances, require a two-thirds vote. So. It, it will be up to the moderator, but I think. The moderator is likely going to have to make that determination at the meeting based on the circumstances before.
Uh, the next question was about. Changing the order of the articles before town meeting started. Uh, the, the town meeting warrant is. Required, by our bylaws, required to be posted fourteen days in advance. It's already been posted. So it's too late for the Board of Selectmen to reorder um, any of the articles ahead of town meeting. So again, it would require a vote. At town meeting. The fourth, the other question here on procedure was about reconsideration and how that would be treated. If a vote on any article asked to be reconsidered. Uh. Nahat bylaws Article Two specifies that no vote shall be reconsidered unless notice that said motion will be made. Is given within fifteen minutes after such vote is declared. Um. And. Is that fifteen rule, fifteen-minute rule current and valid? The answer to that question is yes. Our town bylaws uh, do state that a vote to, uh, for reconsideration would have to be called within. Fifteen minutes of the original vote. That rule has been enforced in the past and it would or could be enforced in the future. Um. The second part was, who can make a motion for reconsideration? For those who don't understand that, it's a. There is some vagueness about uh. The person voting or asking for reconsideration, it's uh, dependent on how they voted on the original vote, either in, in favor or in opposition. Um, our town bylaws do not go into detail about who can make that motion. Um, based on the way that they originally voted. And there's also never been a mechanism to discover that. Um. You know, whether it be a call for the yays and nays, a standing vote, a signal of hands. Um, and then certainly, and especially a secret ballot. Uh, by paper or by electronic voting device. There's no way to verify. Uh, the person asking for reconsideration, whether they voted yes or no on the previous vote. So. Um, essentially, that, that would not come into play. Um, simply the, the reconsider, the request for reconsideration would have to happen within fifteen minutes of the, of the first vote.
Hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna move on now to more specific to the questions um. Of eminent domain. Uh, if eminent domain authority is granted, does it have to be exercised within a certain time limit, or does it last forever, whether used or not?
Sounds like a Jeff Blake question.
Y- y- yeah, um. Does it last forever? Um, you know, probably not. If you voted this and you never exercise it, I, I doubt you could exercise it in forty years. Um, but it, but it does last unless and until it's rescinded. Um, and certainly, I, I'm thinking that a court would likely put some type of reasonable constraint on it. Um, but it would, it will last, you know, technically, it lasts until rescinded. Um, so y- yeah, there's no, there's no expiration. There's no end date on that.
Um. By what means can eminent domain authority be revoked or rescinded once it's granted? Assuming it involves a vote, a town meeting, what would? Uh, the required threshold be?
It, it would be a town meeting vote uh, to rescind. Um, and depending. Upon where you were in the process and what has been done thus, thus far toward accomplishment of. The, the taking, um, it may be a, a, a majority and or two-thirds. It's a, it's a, it's one of those questions. That can't be answered um, generally.
Uh, Jeff, would that have to be taken at an annual town meeting or could it be a special?
I, I believe the statute does say annual.
At the Selectmen's meeting last week, it was announced that the private funds will go first for any eminent domain expense. Does this mean the purchase price, the legal expense, and any costs associated with withdrawing from ADA? In effect, is this a free three million dollar insurance policy for the town?
Yes.
You want, there were a couple of questions in there.
All right.
So.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, she is.
Does, does this, uh, let's see. It was announced that the private funds will go first for any eminent domain expense. So you talked a little bit about that during the presentation. Do you want to go any further on that?
Um. Well, that's the commitment we have. Um. We're um. I think Jeff Blake, you're working on formalizing that. Um.
I am. I, 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 I'm working on fo- formalizing a gift agreement. We will have it signed, sealed, and delivered prior to town meeting. So you will have money in hand, so that it won't be some hypothetical. If we get the three million and, and we've got somebody that says they'll give it to us, we will have, we will have it, we will have it locked down.
Do, does that answer all the questions in that question, Tony?
Does this mean the purchase price, the legal expense, and any costs associated with withdrawing from ADA? So, uh, you talked a little bit about how. The CPC one point five is for the, the purchase of property. And you talked about how the three million would be used first. So if ADA, if we got to the point of ADA. Um, and we for some reason decided to abandon. I believe this question is asking you what you had said early in the, in the presentation, that. Uh, the three million raised would be spent first towards any of those costs. And the one point five would be left untouched.
Hmm.
That's correct.
Um, will taking some of their land by eminent domain absolutely stop them from building on another part of their property?
No.
Hmm.
Uh, next question, how many voting devices do we have for town meeting? Uh, we have. Uh, twelve hundred. Uh, we, we, we've asked, you know, we have more than enough, I think, to uh, to handle the amount of voters that we're expecting to show up. If, um, let's see. Given the text of Article twenty-two includes, or otherwise, as an option for taking. Is Article seventy-nine truly off the table? Or does the article as written still leave that option to the Board of Selectmen?
Uh, off the table. I'll, I'll let uh, Jim, uh, Jeff answer that.
Uh, I'd be happy to answer it. Um, I, I think what it, the, to fairly read the article is by gift purchase. Or eminent domain or otherwise. In other words, if there was some other type of way to acquire the property. I think that when we, when we look at articles. We need to understand that the purpose behind an article is to warn the public. That we're gonna talk about. Eminent, we're gonna talk about acquiring X, Y, Z property. And here's a whole laundry list of ways we're gonna do it. When we go to town meeting, we're going to, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna draft motions for you and you're going to read the motion. The motion will be specific and we will be able, through that motion, to make it so that it, that, that, that the only way we could do. Uh, exercise our eminent domain would be exclusively through chapter ADA. So you won't necessarily see that otherwise. Language in that motion. So it's certainly, the, 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 the article is broad. In case something comes up between when we post and when town meeting happens. But the motion has to be very specific and we will make it very specific.
Has the town in Nahat ever approved the use of eminent domain for the establishment of conservation land in the past?
Mark, um, not to my knowledge, as I said, the golf course, it was, we, we had threatened um, the use of eminent domain, but. I don't recall of any during my administration.
Uh, follow-up, has the town? Been involved in any eminent domain litigation? At all, that you know of?
Not that I know of.
But, um, as Jeff Blake pointed out earlier in the, in the meeting, uh, other towns. Um. Have used eminent domain.
Uh, I, I can, I can amplify that. I, when I was saying other towns have used CPC. Funding for eminent domain for conservation purposes, I can think of an, uh. I, I've done many cases where the towns have used eminent domain to take chunks of property. I did a. Uh, one of my first eminent domain trials ever was a two hundred and fifty acre parcel for the town of Sturbridge. That they took by eminent domain for open space. And I, I've done a variety of other ones since then, so it's. It's, it's very common, very common.
The next question is a resident saying that he understands that. Chapter ADA cannot be abandoned once it goes to judgment. What happens if the judgment is for more than four million dollars? Is this, is the town still liable?
Mr. Masterman, probably best suited.
Under ADA, the process can be abandoned before final judgment.
Um, and what happens if the judgment is for more than four million dollars? I think the board has answered that question a couple of times now that. Um, if it ends up being more than four, they will seek to raise funds um, from private donations. Before moving forward. Is that? Accurate? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, or other source, sources.
Okay.
But not to tell.
Uh, if eminent domain, so I ask these questions, actually, I asked these two questions here dur- uh, already. Um. If this property were for sale on the open market. Who would be the market? Is it other educational institutions or a church? What is the value to others covered by the Dover Amendment? Um, Math, Mr. Mastman?
Uh. There's not an easy answer to that. Um. Uh, because it involves a number of different considerations that enter into the value of real estate. Um, if however, the question assumes. That the only market is for an educational use or a religious use. That assumes that there are multiple educational users. Who are out there all competing for the same, for, all competing to acquire this property. And that they would compete against each other and bid it up to a po- a point which exceeds. Um, um, what a developer would otherwise pay. What we have assumed, and we've looked, by the way, we have looked uh, throughout Eastern Massachusetts for comparable sales. Uh, for, to uh, educational users. Um, and uh, while there are many purchases. By colleges and universities and, and religious organizations. All of those properties have development potential. So if you have a property that is solely limited to educational users. And a user uh, competes against each other, that we expect that number to be exceedingly low. And far less than what a developer would pay.
I think those assumptions are, are all baked into the uh, appraisal. And um, we just, we neglected to mention earlier that um. A summary of that appraisal, as well as the uh, financial impact of the town report are on the nahat.org uh, website. So those um. Those documents are there for um, those who want to review them and uh, understand how that appraisal was. Uh, generated and the assumptions that are made of in that. Preparation.
Out disputeing the appraisers qualifications, is the current approach, appraisal approach, the only approach that could be used and argued in court? Is there all, an alternative method that Northeastern might reasonably expect to use with a higher amount?
I'll take that, Jeff. There are, there are three generally accepted methods or approaches to the valuation of real estate. One is comparable sales. That is uh, comparing the property to similar pro- That is, uh, comparing the property to similar properties and what does the market, uh, indicate is the value of that real estate. The second is the income approach. The income approach assumes that the property is, uh, can be rented. Uh, investment grade real estate. It produces an income like a building produces an income. And the amount of the net operating income, that is the rent less the expenses is then capitalized into an indication of value. That's the income approach. The third is the cost approach. The cost approach says it takes an improvement like a building. It says, oh, even though the building was built 10 years ago, what would it cost to replace that building under today's construction costs? And then because the building isn't new, it has to apply a depreciation factor to account for obsolescence. In the Commonwealth, the cost approach is used for, only for special purpose properties. And one could make an argument that a school is a special purpose property. And so it was considered by Emmett Logue as to whether that would be appropriate in this case. The determination is that it was not because the town is not taking any of Northeastern's buildings. So our position is that that approach does not relate, does not, is not relevant for this consideration. Could Northeastern say that all of its buildings are useless, even though we're not touching them? It's certainly possible, but we think that has, uh, again, a limited chance of persuading anybody. And maybe nobody on this call. Those buildings were left intact and we're not touching them, we're not taking them. Uh, there's no income being generated from this property. So the income approach is not available. That leaves us with the approach that is most commonly employed and that's comparable sales. We've looked at the 12 acre parcel that's going to be impacted by the conservation easement. We, we compared that property because it is limited in use to natural, uh, by the natural resource zoning to other conservation land that sold throughout six county and arrived at our value. Valuation 101, Tony.
Uh, the next question I think is for the selectmen. Uh, are non-Nahat residents allowed to contribute private donations towards the $3 million? If so, does that raise any concerns that non-Nahat residents are receiving too much say in the future of Nahat?
Um, I'm gonna say what my assumption is, my assumption is that, um, those, um, non-Nahat residents could donate, uh, I think, um. Uh, and that would not give, the donors don't have any more say in what happens in Nahat than anybody else. In other words, they're not buying a special privilege to the area or receiving any kind of compensation or special treatment for their donations.
Yep.
Um, I, I agree with, with Josh that, um, outside donors can absolutely donate to a fund that ultimately is given to the town to preserve open space or conservation and they aren't given any, i- in fact, they have less of a voice. Cause you know, one person, one, one vote, but the one person has to be a resident of Nahat. So if you're an out of, out of towner and you give to a fund, um, you're basically giving it without being able to, well, you could certainly use the property, but you have no say in in how the, the property is used or, or what becomes of the property. So, um, I, I would say absolutely you, uh, outside funds can be donated. Um, but I, but I don't necessarily agree with the premise that they are somehow having, uh, uh, undue influence on, on the town. They have l- less influence.
Please ask for estimates on the legal fees for both sides for ADA abandonment.
Uh, we've estimated a half a million dollars on the town of Nahat, uh, side, which will take us all the way through to a jury trial. I have no idea what Northeastern's lawyers are charging.
What is the construction status of the building pumping station geothermal wells? Um. I don't think that, uh, you know, I could say, I guess I could probably answer that one. What the, the current uh, status is Northeastern is, uh, gone through the MIPA process at the state. They're currently in front of the CONCOM with the notice of intent. Um, so as far as construction or related activity to the proposed project, it hasn't, um, begun. Um. Two thirds vote of 3,200 registered voters or who show up at a town meeting? I think that question came in when you were speaking about, um, the threshold of a town meeting vote or, um, I'm not sure when it came up, but any of the, all these actions are taken during town meeting. So it would be the threshold, when we talk about a simple majority or a two thirds, that is in reference to uh, the number of people at town meeting.
The, the, the number of people at town, present and voting.
Yeah.
Right. You, you gotta, you, you've gotta vote. You could be a voter and you can sit in your seat and not vote and your vote won't be counted, nor will your presence toward a two thirds majority or a simple majority.
Thank you. It's a good point. Um, if the judgment is more than four and a half million, is the town liable for that? Um, that question's been answered a couple of times. Uh, the, the, you know, the ADA gives the, uh, the board of selectmen an opportunity to abandon. Should it be more than four and a half million? If it's more than four and a half, uh, the town would, uh, the board of selectmen have said that they would seek alternative funding sources before moving forward.
But just to reiterate, we don't have the authority to spend anything that town meeting hasn't authorized us to spend on eminent domain. Which is one and a half million potentially.
And, um, just because this question keeps coming up, I'll, I'll, I'll ask a little bit further to try to provide clarification. Um, would the board of selectmen have that additional, you know, whatever that delta is, let's say at the ADA uh, judgment, it says it's more than four and a half and it, whatever that delta is, would the board of selectmen um, wait until they have that delta in hand before moving forward?
Yes, I think we would have to.
I, the, because the question is saying, I think it's saying, you know, would we be liable if, if, if there was a further judgment? It would only, it only be liable if you proceeded and you didn't have it and the judgment, you know, and the court required the town to pay it, but you're saying you wouldn't go down that road. Uh, the question just keeps getting asked again, so I was just trying to clarify it further. Uh, same question again. If the town abandons the taking, are the costs of any Northeastern, uh, university construction included in the damages? I think Jim, you, you answered that question already, right?
I did.
And the answer to that question is no?
The, the answer is that there is no case law that supports the award of the increased cost of construction to Northeastern in an eminent domain case.
Okay. Uh, why does Nahat say that $6 million is over 40 years? It has been clear that the term of payment is negotiable.
That was the last, uh, official offer I've heard.
Tony, you were here before the three of us, so what's your recommendation of that?
Uh, the, uh, the last official offer that was offered to the town, um, had to do with 40 years, a 40 year, it was, I think, two million upfront and then the other four spread out over 40 years.
One and a half, uh, after occupancy permit and then 115 ish per year for the next 39 years.
To be fair, to be fair to, uh, Northeastern, they did offer to negotiate the length, you know, the term length of the, of spreading out that, that mitigation funds, uh, but we never, we never ever, we never got to the table to discuss that. Uh, is there any guarantee that the private donors will not receive any beneficial or preferential treatment, uh, in the future? And I think you answered that, but if you want to answer it again?
I don't know, I, I don't know what they, like they get their own day in the park or, uh, the answer is no, there, there is, there would be no preferential treatment. Uh, the donors are anonymous, first of all.
Hmm. Um, please describe what is the outcome that the board of selectmen are seeking?
We'd like to preserve, uh, the natural resource area as a nat- undeveloped natural resource area. Uh, Mark, Gene, feel free to add to that, but that's my synopsis, my summary.
Yeah, and I would agree, uh, but I'd also add to that, uh, uh, I wish that we could come to some negotiated settlement, having Northeastern do a development in another location on that property that would suit their needs.
And I, I think that, I think that I have to, to jump in there too and agree. But also add that we haven't had any discussions on the lobster fisheries, what, what the coastal fisheries in that area. And that's a whole other subject.
Um, uh, Mark, the, that, the next question was, does a negotiated settlement include a building at East Point? And I think you just said that.
Yes. I would say it could.
Um, in a typical eminent domain case, what are the expected monthly legal fees? Slash, how long would you estimate the time of litigation?
I think that's for our lawyers.
Hmm.
Uh, go ahead, Jeff. What do you think?
Um. In a typical eminent domain case, you're probably looking at two to three years. Typical chapter 79 from filing of, uh, of an appeal of the, of the pro tanto to go out through the jury. Um, as far as a typical monthly budget, I, I, I can't really give a typical monthly budget. It, each case is very, very different. Some cases, and Jim will back me on this, some cases will have four, five or six, seven different experts. And they're extraordinarily expensive because all the experts are getting hundreds of dollars an hour together with their lawyers. And other cases are, are not. Um, a lot of times it's just a matter of, you know, two appraisers going at it. Um, so I, you know, I suspect this one will fall somewhere in the middle. Um, but I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable throwing out a monthly budget. Uh, it's just, it's, it's too fact specific, too circumstance specific for me to, um, for me to go there. I, I think, uh, Jim has thrown out a number as far as the, uh, uh, as far as the overall budget, but I, I, I don't really think we can break it down into a monthly budget.
But just as a sanity check, if, if it were to reach $500,000 and it were stretched over three years or 36 months, 500,000 divided by 36 is 13.9,000 per month, just to sort of.
Okay, a question for Jeff. Jeff, I've been asked by a number of people, what is the simple definition of pro tanto?
Jim, what is it? What, what, Jim knows that he always tells us it too.
Okay, um, the pro tanto is just another way, uh, it, it's, it means in Latin as far as it goes. It has come to mean the initial payment. Um, when a, when the town votes under 79 or here under ADA, the amount of money it expects to pay, it is saying, we think this is just compensation. Once that occurs, the landowner can say, yeah, you're right. It is full fair and just compensation. Or we think that there's additional damages that are owed. There is no prejudice to a, to a landowner to accept the amount of money offered pro tanto as far as it goes without prejudice. That is not the case here. We will not be tendering a pro tanto payment to Northeastern. There is no money going to be paid to Northeastern until it is determined whether by the commissioners or later by a jury, what the fair market value is upon final adjudication.
Does that become the pro tanto amount?
No, there's, there will be no pro tanto amount in the ADA proceeding. That'll be an amount of money that we're offering as our anticipated, um, uh, the amount of damages. I forget the exact term that's used in, in ADA, but it is the initial determination of damages. We will say this is what we think the amount is and we've talked about that. It's around $2 million. Northeastern can say, we agree, we're done. Or it can challenge that amount. If this were a 79 proceeding, as Jeff has explained so well, we would pay the money, the pro tanto. Title would vest immediately in the town and then we would seek additional damages. The acceptance of the money by Northeastern under the 79 proceeding would be pro tanto.
Thank you.
And let me speak to this issue of timing. Uh, Jeff is again right, um, under the time standards of the, uh, Superior Courts of the Commonwealth, an eminent domain case is considered to be on the fast track. And it's going to be resolved, uh, within 18 to 24 months of the date the complaint is filed under chapter 79. Under ADA, that time standard is really thrown out because the cha- the statute requires the immediate appointment of commissioners who are private citizens. What we expect to happen is that if the town were to authorize the selectmen and the selectmen were to go forward with a taking on a chapter ADA, then we have to initiate litigation, the town has to initiate litigation in Superior Court and the judge would appoint commissioners immediately. It is more likely than not that that hearing before the commissioners will occur within, I'm going to say six to eight months of the time when we start the, uh, the, the litigation. Final adjudication through a jury could take the additional two years. But we will have a very, very strong indication of whether we're right or wrong within, uh, let's say within six to eight months.
Thank you.
A 14 to 27 million dollar cost to the town of NU development are not real budget items. Please describe the budget items and dollars, uh, from the Northeastern expansion.
I think the easiest answer to that is to read the RKG report on nahat.org. There's, there's a lot of details in there.
It's in the book too. I'll, I'll also put a plug there. It's in the back of, uh, it's in the back of the Finance Committee book.
Great.
Uh, the map covers the area above the NEU Murphy Battery operation. Is the taking only the land above the battery as an easement?
Yes.
As the canoe beach too.
Hmm.
So the, the ba- the Murphy bunker, uh, is a conservation easement, the, the canoe beach is an access easement.
Correct.
Hmm.
Um, can the uh, board of selectmen guarantee if we vote yes, Northeastern cannot build a building on any other part of the land or expand their existing building?
Uh, we had that question already, um. The co- the, what we're proposing for the conservation restriction area does not take all their land, so, um, potentially they could build, um, in the portion of the land that's not on the uncovered, uh, the conservation restriction.
Yes, community preservation funds cannot be If community preservation funds cannot be used for legal fees. Should the litigation stretch out and exhaust the donated funds? If the town abandons the taking, who is responsible for paying? The NU legal fees and other abandonment costs? Would the court order the town to pay the NU fees?
Uh, Josh, can I jump in for a minute? I'm gonna ask the investment to chime in on this. There's an assumption in that question that we'd be responsible for legal fees and I'm, and I think Jim, you could, you can talk about that in a minute. Uh. But if we were to abandon the, um, the taking, uh, at any point. Uh, we would have three million dollars of non-tax payers money, um, to cover any damages that would be. Uh, forced upon us.
Uh, the part of the question I can answer is, um, would a court order? Northeastern to pay its own lawyers? If it exceeds the amount that's budgeted here, the court doesn't have that authority.
So would the court order the town to pay NU fees?
Oh, Northeastern's fees, I see, only upon an abandonment.
Would those fees include legal fees? Or just expenses?
Well, that's debatable. That's debatable. Uh, the American rule is that each litigant bears its own expenses. That includes its own legal fees. That's the American rule. Um. They, as, as we've indicated earlier, there's no case law under ADA. Which suggests that the court would abandon the American rule under chapter ADA. There is no case law that says that they will. So, uh, uh, won't, um. But we're going into this proceeding by saying that each litigant bears its own expenses. Um, until there's an abandonment. Then that shifts the burden of expenses and damages to the town of, to the town to pay for Northeastern. We do not think that includes Northeastern's legal fees.
Could you envision that to be more than three million dollars?
It's, it's very difficult for me to answer that question, Mark, because I don't know how long the, the matters, the matter's going to take. But I do not see it under, let's put it this way. Uh, I've advised under certain assumptions that we don't expect if everything goes the way we expect it to go. That it takes only a certain amount of time to litigate this matter. We get an adverse decision very quickly and the town decides to abandon the taking. Uh, it, it will not exceed the three million dollars we have, the four point five million dollars we have budgeted.
What happens to CPA funds? Uh. What happens to CPA funds we? Bond if this is abandoned? Where do the negotiations stand regarding the damages fee if we abandon? Can they claim losses as a result of not getting grants, enrollment? Faculty, et cetera, as a result of the delay? Um, if so, has that been factored in?
I, I can take a crack at the, the CPA funds as, as we said earlier and market indicated that as well. Those, those, if we abandon, those can't be used for attorneys, but whatever fees and costs that may be awarded. That has to be used for the acquisition of a property. And you, you know, just a, 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 a little, uh, uh, comment on, on, uh, on damages. Damages have to be, especially in, in eminent domain cases, specific damages and they can't be too speculative. And trying to say that I lost a, uh, uh, I, I couldn't get faculty because I couldn't, because of this taking is. In my opinion, it's way, way too, too far removed and way too speculative. Even if that were in fact a, a legitimate measure of damages under a land taking case. And I don't believe it is, but I'll defer to Jim.
No, I think you hit it right on, Jeff. Um, uh, we have considered this. This is something that we thought about long and hard because we would expect. Northeastern to try to inflate the land damages, uh, beyond what are standard eminent domain land damages. And one of the ways to do it is to say, we would have had another fifty marine biologists paying tuition. If we have a chance to expand this facility. Well, that's the business of Northeastern. It doesn't relate to the land. And under Massachusetts law and forty out of the fifty states. Business loss is not part of land damages in an eminent domain case.
And we have, um, about five more minutes, uh, quite a few more questions. Um, that, you know, like I said, we will, uh, be meeting again tomorrow night so we can, we can, uh, continue the conversation then. Um. But I think we've got time for another one or two.
I, I did get, um, I did get a, a few in my, um, private, uh, email, Tony, late, uh. If we have time, I can try to quickly go through those.
Yeah.
Um. Does the arrangement, if there is one, with the private donors place preserving east? Place preserving East Point mean no building on or directly adjacent to the bunker as a condition of the donations? Um. Well, uh, the, the donations are for eminent domain. Uh, we've shown the, the, the map of, of where the concentration restrictions would be. So any building that. Uh, I don't think this has been, um, arranged explicitly with the private donors, but any. Building would not be permitted in that conservation restriction area. Um, can the BOS explain the logistics and mechanisms of how decisions related to East Point eminent domain are made? Include this, included in this explanation mention of how the voices of private citizens and donors as well as organizations such as KNW. Our community communicated and heard and incorporated into the response of the BOS. Um. I think, uh, well, uh, this is my opinion. My opinion is, um, that we've tried to listen to the voices of, um, of the citizens of the town. Uh, both in favor of preservation of this land and, um, let's say challenging the preservation of the land, um. And really the latter have been, um, helpful in, uh, in. Us tightening up the, the, the financial story on this eminent domain case. In other words, specifying ADA. Uh, specifying that we, in the articles of the three million dollar in private donations had to be in hand. Um, and, um, in the recent, um. Uh, the recent changes or the recent, um, agreement with the, with, that the private donations would be sent first. So we're trying to listen to all voices, uh, on both sides and, um, that's how we, um. Uh, that's how we're making our decisions. Um, through the progression of Northeastern's communication in person, presentation and mailings with respect to the assorted. Uh. Possible expansion plan. Doesn't it seem like Northeastern's plans have evolved to be even more intrusive and out of balance than their initial concepts? And do you think that's, this has anything to do with the confrontational way the board of selectmen and many of its citizens have chosen to engage Northeastern? Um. Uh, I don't, I don't subscribe to the, the initial premise that, um, Northeastern has made their. Plans more intrusive and more out of balance. I think it's, they've been pretty consistent with their. Concept, uh, for the last at least two and a half years, so, um. Uh, can really answer the question. I don't think, I don't think Northeastern has, uh, made their. Plans more intrusive as sort of a way of thumbing their nose at. At the board of selectmen or the town or the citizens. Uh, and, uh, one final question, um, I'm gonna kind of. Um, distill this one. Um, I think what the question is asking is. Uh, should we be asking for pilot payments? Uh, or com- fair compensation, um. Expansion or not, um, uh, this is something that Gene brought up, um, a few meetings back, um. I think the answer is yes, uh, we should formalize that request, but, um. My personal opinion is that maybe we want to, uh, uh, let the dust settle on this issue and then, um. You know, when we get, uh. Uh, this issue resolved, you know. Include what is, what is a fair and appropriate compensation to the town for hosting Northeastern in any size. Um, so those are the four questions that got in the, in the mail. There was one more, uh, came into the town mail. It was not about the articles, but, um, it, let's see, I'm gonna try to read it. Uh, basically it was, um. Can I drive down, you know, can I? Can I rush down to the, uh, meeting, uh? You know, watch on TV and then rush down and get a chance to vote. That's, uh, more of a moderated question, but I think the, the realistic answer was town meeting is not going to wait for you to show up. So if you want to vote, make sure you're there.
Hmm.
Um, that's the only ones I had in the email, Tony. I don't know if there's any more in the chat still.
There's about twenty more in the chat, um, and I, you know, I went in order by which I received them. Um, so, you know, we are at nine o'clock, uh, we are meeting tomorrow, um. I will write these questions down for you to answer tomorrow night. Um. That last question about, um, we did, we've received a lot of questions at the town hall, a lot of calls about. How can I, how can we vote? You know, can, is there any way for me to vote without attending town meeting? Is there any way for you to, you know? Put a question on at a certain time? Is there any way to schedule? Is there any easier way for me to, you know, get in, get out? It real, there really isn't, uh, town meeting, you know, open town meeting specifically, our type of government. Um, requires that you be there, be present when the motion is read and the vote is taken and the question is called in order to vote on it. Uh, you could sit at home and you could watch, you know, and try to get down there in time. But as we talked about earlier, questions can be called out of order. Um, and you run the risk of missing the opportunity to vote. So, you know, I, I can understand that, you know, a lot of people are looking to vote on a couple of specific questions. Uh, and don't, and may not, you know, have any interest in the others, but unfortunately. The way the town meeting works, you do have to be there when the question is called in order for your vote to be recorded.
Hmm.
Um. All right, so, yeah, I have, I got like twenty more questions. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jot them down and I'll have them for you tomorrow night. Uh, thank everybody that's been on the call tonight. A lot of, a lot of good questions. A lot of, a lot, a lot of more good questions to be answered tomorrow. Um, and, uh, hopefully this has been helpful to people to understand the, the topic a little bit better and. Uh, feel a little bit more prepared to come to town meeting and vote on it.
Any other? Thanks, everybody for, uh, attending, um, thanks, uh, attorneys Blake and Masterman for, uh, the support. And, uh, Tony for the coordination, uh, with that I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Uh, seconded.
Gene muted.
Uh, let's see, um. Any discussion? Seeing here, all in favor?
I'm back, all in favor. Gene can't, the eye.
My color light, my color light. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thanks, good night.
Thanks, everybody. Good night. See you tomorrow night.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Jim.